Good evening, everyone. I'd like to point out the emergency exits. We have two in the back room and one up front to your left. This is the 12th regular meeting of the Cicero Town Board. Please silence your cellphone or other electronic devices. The meeting is not unnecessarily disturbed. If you must speak on your cellphone, please exit through the back hallway or outside. We also ask you to please keep gender to the minimum so as not to disturb others. The town acknowledges the importance of full public participation in all meetings. We therefore urge all who wish to address the board to utilize the microphone at the front of the room. If anyone is unable to hear, please let us know so that adjustments can be made as necessary. Counselor Conway, can you lead us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please remain standing so we can have a moment of silence for our troops in their right? Town Board minutes of the record. Town Board meeting held then June 12th, 2019.
I will second the motion to approve them. Any board comments? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Naye? Any extensions? Pass unanimously. Thank you.
Abstracts. I'm in motion to approve abstract number 25 dated June 19th, 2019, and abstract 26 dated June 26th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Any board comments? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Naye? Any extensions? Pass unanimously. Thank you.
And I'm commotion to accept the budget modifications and amendments as listed.
Second. Any board comments? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Naye? Any extensions? Pass unanimously. Thank you. We will now have a public hearing to consider an amendment to Chapter 198 of the Town Code relating to parking regulations for town parks. I approve of publication and posting. Before we start, Counselor, if you want to speak to that.
Ms. Posman, do you have that PDF I sent to you with the proposed statute? Thank you. We've been having an issue with some vehicles being parked overnight, particularly commercial vehicles and trailers in town parks. And it turned out, when the police were approached about this, that there actually is no statute prohibiting that. There's specific time periods for people to be in town parks, but nothing prohibiting the parking. So what we've done here is two things. One is, you can see 198-8.1 prohibiting parking in town parks between one half hour after sunset and one half hour before sunrise, which is also the hours where the parks are closed, separately parking any trailer, and then exempting from A1 motor vehicles, which are being used pursuant to people who have permits for after-hours fishing in the park. The second thing is the penalties for offenses. Most of the parking offenses that are found in our vehicle in traffic code are really just parking on a street where you shouldn't park, or parking on a street during the winter when you obviously shouldn't park there because of snowplows. That's just a plain $10 fine, as you can see, and I mean, that's pretty appropriate for kind of a slap on the wrist if someone might have forgotten. We're really trying to deter people from parking overnight in town parks. It does create, besides being an annoyance, it also does create a potential public, or sorry, officer-safety problem for the police officers. These parks are not always particularly well-lit, they're not always in populated areas. You know, police officers see that a vehicle's not supposed to be there, it's potentially, you know, approaching a dark vehicle in an isolated area, and that does create a safety concern for them. So we have a, basically, a progressive fine, $50 for first conviction, $100 for the second conviction, $150 for third conviction, or any subsequent conviction. I'd also point out that the way this is written, it is on purpose. If a vehicle is parked with a trailer overnight, they get three tickets. They get a ticket for parking the vehicle overnight, a ticket for parking the trailer overnight, and a ticket for parking the trailer, period.
Change Chapter 198 of the Town Code.
Dave Riley, page 899, I'll pass again. I think this is a well-crafted, much-needed provision. I appreciate Councilor Carter taking the time to, I'm sorry, Counselor Carter taking the time to, I like that it has a progressive penalty for people that continue to do this overnight. My only question is, are we the most signs that people are aware of that this is happening? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just would like to speak in favor as well. I am receiving a number of complaints from residents around the different parks who want to know why someone can park their trailer or their boat on a trailer and leave it there extended periods of time. So this won't really help with neighboring people, especially in these park areas.
Good. And I'd like to point out that the definition of trailer that's in use, that's, this goes back to the definition section of the whole vehicle in traffic code, is the definition of trailer used in the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law, which is extremely expansive. So this will cover pretty much anything that anyone would even remotely consider to be a trailer.
Good. And good job, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I will close the public hearing, and I will move for the adoption of a resolution to determine an amendment to Chapter 198 of the Town Code relating to parking regulations for town parks as an unlisted action involving no permit granting authorities outside the town. The action will not have negative impact on the environment and does not require the completion of the draft environmental impact statement. I'll move for the adoption of a resolution approving an amendment to Chapter 198 of the Town Code relating to parking regulations for town parks to be known as local law 14 of 2019.
Second.
None? Quite done yet. Thank you. Put that down as a second? That's all right. To be enacted by the Cicero Town Board. Section 1, statutory authority. This local law is adopted pursuant to Statute 10 of Municipal Home Rule Law. Section 2, legislative intent.
We don't normally read the whole.
Who do I have to?
No, we don't normally read it.
Read it onto? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. It's there for the record.
I just wanted to see that tonight.
No, that's fine. Thanks. I'm happy to read it, but we will pass on that. I have a second. So any further board discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Naye? Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. We also have a public hearing scheduled tonight to consider an amendment to Chapter 185 of the Town Code relating to streetlights and subdivision process. We are going to withdraw that hearing. Counselor Carter, can you talk to us about that?
Yeah. We, I explained at the last meeting why, because we wanted the streetlights to be put in the subdivisions and put in, have to be required part of the site plan. As it turns out, it already was. Not something I was aware of, not something the current planning board was aware of, not something the directed code enforcement was aware of. There's a list of utilities that are required. It says shall, doesn't say name, it says shall, required to be put in, in Plan 4 as part of the subdivision process. And the current planning board has not approved any subdivisions, but for whatever reason, and I wasn't there, so I can't speak to it, prior, planning boards did not actually require that despite the statute requiring them to require it. So any future neighborhoods, they'll get the streetlights. With regard to existing neighborhoods that do not have streetlights, they will have to go through the petition process that we've already established. By carrying petitions, getting majority of the neighbors, bring it here, we'll have to let it miss or etc. So if there's no need for new law, there's no new law.
Good. Thank you. Moving right along. Weaver Road Zone Change. Note that the public hearing was closed at the 6:12 2019 Town Board meeting. Before we go, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Number one, with no disrespect to the planning board member, we had a planning board member stand up and say he was going to wear another hat as a private citizen and that he was against it. That, I think, was improper. I think he understands that. You can't change hats either if you are a officer of the town, paid officer of the town, or a paid officer of the town. If you have an issue with your board, take it up with your board. But when a planning board passes down a decision and they have vetted that decision, generally unless there's some sort of major aberration, we don't normally question that. And also, there was two pieces of misinformation that were given. Number one was that people weren't notified. People were notified. And in fact, we put off the vote because I wanted to do my own research on it and ask some questions. Everyone, all the contiguous properties, property owners were notified via postcard. So that was number two. Number three, the other thing that was not brought out about this at the Town Board discussion is that there is a covenant on the property. So the covenant means that the property will be maintained to standards and its aesthetics will be attended to as part of the process for being there. So I don't think everybody got the full story on that I have, or now we have. And I will move for the adoption of a resolution determining the zone change as an unlisted action involving no permit granting authorities outside the town. The action will not have a negative impact on the environment, does not require the completion of the draft environmental impact statement. I'll also move for the adoption of a resolution approving the zone change application as proposed with parcel and designations listed in the field application, 8681 Weaver Road Tax Map number 097 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 1, to be known as local law 15 of 2019. Second. Any board comments and discussion?
Yes, please. I am going to speak for those who spoke at the last Town Board meeting regards to spot zoning and also the opportunity to open it up to others in the neighborhood to be able to have rental property, turn their garages or whatever. I just feel that the spot zoning, the property is, can be built on, it's a buildable lot. You can, with a subdivision, you could actually build two residents on the property. So with that said, I will, I'm just speaking in regards to those who have approached me because they weren't able to speak. Thank you.
I'd also like to comment. When I first got on the board, we spent a lot of time doing some comprehensive rezoning. I see a lot of the same faces here that were there, so I'm sure you all remember the presentations we heard about how bad spot zoning was. We were showing zoning maps, showing little dots that kind of disrupted the homogeneity of certain areas, and we were told that was spot zoning, that spot zoning was bad, that we were rezoning, that spot zoning was a mistake that was made in the past, that we shouldn't be doing it. And I mean, really, this disrupts me as more spot zoning. I understand residential's not commercial industrial, but it is significantly different from the surrounding uses. I think it disrupts the homogeneity of the neighborhood. I think people purchase single-family homes, they, in a single-family area, they generally have a reasonable expectation that the neighborhood's going to remain like that. I did speak to a licensed real estate appraiser, who I use as an expert witness, and so my litigation, it was an informal opinion, I didn't pay him for it, so I'm not going to get out his name because I wasn't going to drag him into this. And he said that he did feel that it could have a negative effect on the value of the surrounding properties and also their marketability, and obviously, any impact on marketability does ultimately affect price. I understand and acknowledge that we did postcard the contiguous properties. The problem I have with that, and I think we need to come up with a better policy for postcarding, is the fact that it's not just contiguous properties that are going to be affected. You know, if something happens three hours down from you, it might affect your property value, and yet, if you're not contiguous, you're not getting notified. So because of the negative impact on, the potential negative impact concerning property owners, because of the fact that I view that this is spot zoning, and the fact that I do not feel that our current postcarding policy is adequate, I will be going though.
Just one thing on spot zoning. We endeavor, as those of you who intend this to read the minutes at home know, we did a lot of rezoning in the town of Cicero. We've addressed it. We're not done with it by any means. But we had, we had no defined business district, we created one. We had, we have properties, residential properties, we have all sorts of properties all over the town of Cicero, and I don't think anyone really paid attention to it. And I think it's fair to say that because for years and years, it was never addressed and nothing was done. So we have already identified many properties that were zoned improperly, agricultural when they should have been zoned residential, et cetera, et cetera. And we have moved forward with that. As a matter of fact, I am going to pat myself on the back, this is the only administration's ever done it and identified the problem. However, what you run into is that, you know, people have a right, people have a right to use their property and enjoy their property. And if they wait until we get to the point where their particular area is rezoned, well, it may discourage them from doing anything, purchasing the property or building on it or even wanting to reside in the town of Cicero. So, you know, spot zoning is something, yes, it is, it's not always bad. I don't think it's bad in this case, and we have moved to correct the problems of the past. So that being said, any other comments? Mrs. Posman, call for a vote, please.
Supervisor, Counselor Woody?
I vote no.
Counselor Koishman?
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbert?
Yes.
Counselor Carr?
No.
And Supervisor Vaneski?
Yes.
A general public hearing? Yes. Move the adoption of a resolution to set a public hearing for Wednesday, July 24th, 2019, at 6:30 PM to consider an amendment to Chapter 152 of the Town Code relating to town park operating hours. This is kind of funny, it grew out of the work I did on the parking regulation. So you all saw, it says that the parks, in my statute, it says the parks are closed between one hour after sunset and one hour before sunrise. Basically say between sunset and sunrise, okay? If you look at the current version of 152, I can remember what subsection it is, I, J, whatever, it says the opposite. It says the parks are closed between one half hour before sunrise and one half hour after sunset. So it actually says the parks are closed during the day. That law was passed in 1988, and I had several people look at it, and because you know what it's supposed to say, when you just read it quickly, you think it says sunset to sunrise, but it doesn't. So this is just to fix that very obvious mistake.
Okay. Any other comments before we set the public hearing?
We have a second.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any public comments? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Naye? Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. Sue Remington?
Your presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tony, I, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. We have with us Tony Broccoli, the director of the canteen. And Tony has some exciting information for us tonight.
I do.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you for having me this evening. I happen to be the older sibling of someone who struggles with addiction. Do you have to give it, give me one minute? Thank you. Thanks. We were very fortunate as our fundraising arm of our program, the Friends of the Canteen, were nominated and chosen to receive a remarking brand boost up through the ABC Creatives. They narrowed down the choices. They gave me a call and asked me some questions, fun program about, you know, where we sit in the community and how we interact with the community. And then when we were chosen, they went into research mode. And I, we had never worked with a group like this before. And they came in and they interviewed kids. They found that I was going to be on vacation during this 24-hour brand bash, so they came in and did a video and interviewed me. They interviewed kids, they interviewed other members of the Friends of the Canteen, they did their research. They really did their research. And then, on that 24-hour brand bash, they invited groups of the Friends of the Canteen in and set off on a 24-hour odyssey to create this whole package for us. And with that came these three videos, and then when the videos are done, we're going to reveal them here, and then when the videos are done, I'll give you the rest of the list of what we received that evening, and it's quite extensive, to be honest with you. So here we go. Ready, Trace?
Ready.
I happen to be the older sibling of someone who struggles with addiction. And when my kids were growing up, it became apparent in my family that I wanted to do something so other families didn't have to deal with what they were doing. The idea that it's not a program, kids don't want to come to a program, they want to build a relationship, they want to have friends, they want to feel like they're working. Everybody, every human wants to feel that. So that's what we're here for. So prior to going into that, we went back to the kids and said, okay, what's going to bring you to a place? What do you want to see? What do you, since you came to us, what would you like to see? And number one was food, number two was music, and number three was a place to call home. We are seeing an average of 50 to 75, upwards of 100, depending on the day, young people a day. We, as the staff here at the canteen, have spent 20 years building relationships with kids as the base of what we do. We've been youth-led since day one, continue to build on that premise, that kids should have a voice and a choice at the table, that we don't plan about them without them. And my staff's sole focus is the kids who come. Kids come to the canteen for a variety of reasons. Some are just looking for a place to come after school because if they went home, it would be to an empty house where their parents are working, they're left to their own devices to maybe make some unhealthy choices, some risky behaviors. So they want to be surrounded by other kids, and their social meetings, at the heart of who they are, their social meetings. So they come here for that. We try to make, to connect the dots for them, that not only do things in your, in your community exist, and they're for families, but that you can contribute and be looked at as a resource. There's any number of ways that a young person can give back to their community, and if given the opportunity and ask, if they're willing to, they're 90% of the time more than willing to give back. In fact, they'll ask, what is going on this week? Because as an adult who has a relationship with you as a teenager, what I say to you and the scenes that I plan regarding healthy choices and going away from those risky behaviors, your parent can say the very same thing to you, and you're not going to hear it the same way, or you're going to choose to hear it the same way. So we're thinking, if we wrap around as many adults as we can to help you make good choices and to help you navigate some of those mindfalls that are out there as adolescents, then maybe you're less likely to make those poor choices. Our youth are our future, you know, as corny as that is, it is as truthful as you can be. And so if we don't invest in them now, we're going to be paying for them later. Family.
Amazing. Friendship.
Fun.
Friendly.
Welcome.
Amazing.
Awesome.
Friendly.
Awesome.
A fun place.
Food.
Fun.
Food.
You're fun.
Very fun.
Helpful.
So we're a little mom-and-pop operation that truly rely on continued support. So my goal 20 years from now is that we still value what we can bring to the table for our young people, and that kids are still talking about, oh, the canteen, that was just an awesome place, I had such a good time there. That would be, that would be awesome to just keep doing then, forever and always.
It brought tears to my eyes.
Trace, are there still two other little videos? So the next two are the kids being asked a question and their responses to those questions.
Very artistic.
I am an anxious person that loves to draw. I'm fun.
I'm.
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 I'm talented.
I am.
I am loving.
I am like, very sarcastic.
I am unique.
I am hunter.
I am a gamer.
I'm fun.
I am autistic.
I am friendly.
I am, I'm good at basketball.
I am very, very energetic.
I am a gamer.
I am not the best at math.
I am not patient.
Not lazy.
I am totally open-minded, patient.
I'm not mean.
I'm not a bad kid.
I am not dramatic.
I'm not the person that everyone knows.
I love that.
School, and I love that math.
I'm not ugly.
I'm not rude.
I'm not mean.
I am not a fascist. I am not the type of person to be, like, mean to people.
I am not mean.
I am not normal.
It's a player coming in, seeing her, so crazy ass girl.
I'm an energy. She's a very nice and energetic person, and she really likes people on shows.
Thank you, and I love you. You're awesome.
She's kind and loving, and she really does love the show, and being involved in it.
I would say that she's doing a great job and that she's made an exponential difference in the canteen.
How far she's come from the canteen and how well she's.
Thank you.
So as you could see, there was quite an eclectic group of kids that were there on that, that day. They actually came back twice, but some of those kids that were in that video, if you asked administration at the school district, they would say that they are a challenge at school. Rightfully so, said that some of them said that they struggled at school, school is not their thing. But they, but they have other things that make them who they are, that make them just as valuable as the next kid who maybe is more academically enhanced, you know? So it was quite an eye-opener for them as the marketing group, who had never dealt with a teen population before, and it was quite an eye-opener for us as a teen group that had never dealt with a marketing campaign before. So we are grateful beyond words. So with that, you have some printed materials in front of you. As part of our package, we received a, a package of 530-second commercials that we will be using to advertise our BAM Film Festival. We also received a check, or will be receiving a check, from Vision Federal Credit Union for $2,500 to go toward our 20 for 20 campaign.
Nice.
We received two digital billboard spaces from Melmar Advertising that we are now using for Macer. So by the way, Macer is August 10th and 11th this year, so pencil it into your calendars. 9, 10, 11, Friday evening is when the ethics start arriving and checking in. And we formally invite you all to come to opening ceremonies to watch, watch Mr. Vaneski do the do-or-die. We also received $750 in printing materials so that we can order more of those brochures. One is more toward the young, the young population. One of those cards is for fundraising, and the other is for the adult population. We also received $1,000 that we can order promotional products like t-shirts, hats, you know, that kind of stuff. We, we were given e-communication advertising in the Business Journal News Network, a $4,000 value, and Galaxy Communication 25 30-second radio commercials that we'll be using for the BAM Film Festival, along with any interview. Plus, all the videos that you saw and their time and efforts that they put in for that 24-hour bash, brought it to a grand total of about $89,000 in materials and equipment. Oh, wow.
Outstanding.
Which was, you know, Jody can speak to the unveiling, but holy moly, it was an experience. When I came back from vacation, it was such an overwhelming thing to get you all at once, all that they did to help us to see ourselves as, yes, we're a mom-and-pop operation, but when you've served thousands, tens of thousands of kids over 20 years, you're so much more than a mom-and-pop operation, and we have to stop thinking of ourselves in that way. So that really kind of brought it to my attention that, you know, we have something unique in our community, that I can't tell you how many times Jody and I traveled the state, out of the state, and people have said to us, I wish our community had something like this. We are unique in the fact that our community supports our young people in ways that people can only envy. So thank you for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
And the marketing thing was just one way to kind of focus in on that and bring it to the forefront, and they did an awesome job. So thank you.
There are.
I was just going to say, where are, and here, these commercials, where are they going to be? Do you know?
I believe the commercials for BAM are going to be on 102.
Okay. They're video, but TV, or they don't be on TV at all?
They might be on TV, we haven't really, we want to be real strategic about how we use these commercials.
Spend, spend it, right.
So, you know, we're just kind of brainstorming. It is, is needed, and it's absolutely something that we work on every year, that's a struggle to get the sponsors, but it's, it is what it is, and it's growing, you know, as it's grown. Where BAM is just starting out, and it's got growth potential in the North Syracuse Junior High School Auditorium that we haven't even begun to scratch the surface, so we want to focus a lot of what we're doing on that. So we'll make decisions, whether it's television, radio, how would we go about that.
Sometimes TV is, it's so expensive that it might not be the, the right direction to go for 30 seconds.
Yeah, and who's our audience?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
If it's in the middle and when that happens, it's too AM, it's not really going to help us all, right? So, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, there's, first of all, I'd like you to pass this on to our web coordinator, Davy Kirk. I'd like to get this up on, up on our Facebook and website. It's absolutely outstanding. You know, in life, you meet people who are absolutely, you wouldn't get, if you could avoid them at any cost because they're so disgusting as human beings. And then you find some people who are absolutely outstanding, and there is no one like you and what you've done. If you've gone to these kids and you've talked to them, and when they look at you and they tell you, you know what, if it wasn't for the canteen, if it wasn't for Tony and her program, you know, we would have nowhere to go after school. No one would look after us, we would be on our own. You know, we would, and those, those kids are afraid, some of them are really afraid. We have an outstanding program that is, that we're very, very lucky to have, and our future and our children are very lucky to have, and I thank you so much for what you've done.
We appreciate it.
Yes.
Ryan and your Sanitary Sewer Maintenance, the adoption resolution to approve additional funds of $4,000 to Ryan and here for 2019 Container Pullout and Continuance of Services for Sanitary Sewer Maintenance, Improvements and Repairs. Let's go to SS 812041997.
Second. Kate, any other comment about sewer maintenance? It's an exciting subject.
Yeah, well, it's just, there's a lot of it going on. So we get called by the county quite a bit, lots of times I go out into the county sometimes to, you can say that's prior property, it goes away, but it keeps us busy. So unfortunately, with the fast-track problem, I think that happened in February, a lot of the funds were depleted right then and there.
Okay, any other comments before we call for the vote? There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. I move the adoption of resolution to approve the following expenses for the Highway Garage project. $17,589.48 to MRV Group, $1,395 to Terricon. For a second.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously again. Thank you. Change order for JBS Dirt. I'll move for the adoption of the following resolution, and I will read it in its entirety as follows. Whereas the Town of Cicero Board here in, here in, here in Asper, referred to as the Town Board, intends to construct a highway facility at 6658 York State Route 31, Town of Cicero. MRV Group completed design plans for site improvements, need for the highway facility. Upon JBS Dirt Incorporated completing excavation, it was found that some areas were poor soils and needed to be stabilized. Based on geotechnical engineers' evaluations, determined the best way to stabilize the soil to withstand the highway loads on the property was to install GeoGrid on top of the non-woven geotextile fabric. Whereas MRV Group, based on a site inspection, plotted out an approximate area that required GeoGrid. Final area is to be determined depending on proof rolling on the areas where unstable soil exists. Estimated quantity of area that requires GeoGrid is 70,000 square feet, at a cost of $0.25 per square foot. Total cost is estimated $17,500. Estimated cost was provided by JBS Dirt or RFP, response to RFP number 15. Now therefore, be a result, the town accepted an increase in the contract with JBS Dirt incorporated the amount of $17,500 to cover the expense of GeoGrid placement, appropriate change order to be authorized by JBS Incorporated and the town. The Town Board further resolves that supervisor authorized, is authorized to sign the change order and appropriate documents for this contract. Second. Don Blush, you're with us tonight, you want to chat anything about this, you and I, everybody? About the change order?
Yeah. That change order was precipitated by last fall, when we started the building, that southwest corner was exceptionally soggy, dug out a lot of it, but not enough, and that was over and above the original contract. So our engineering people said, not only do we have to use fabric, but geotech. We put it down so that we could get started and complete the site work, which we did. But this spring, when with everything was wet, we were taking on a lot of water and everything, we had cases where it bubbled up, that has to be dug out, new geotech, and they're talking about $70,000 worth each. Everything is on site, everything is ready to go.
All those in favor, thank you for that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. The next thing is a housekeeping item, continuing disclosure statement. This is for the bonds on the second half of the borrowing for the highway facility. Is it really required? I'm told by the controller, no, but she really, she asked if we would do it anyway, so I will state it for the record. I move for the adoption of resolution stating that town officials are satisfied that the disclosures set forth in the continuing disclosure statement are true, correct, and does not, and does not contain any untrue statements of a material fact or omit to state a material fact necessary to make the statements, and the continuing disclosure statement in light of the circumstances in which they were made, not misleading until that was written by an attorney. Looking for a second.
I'll second it, and I'll just make a comment. I did speak to Shirley about this because it was unfamiliar to me, and she did explain that, so I did follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution to appoint the following. Stacy Obelman is a part-time clerk one for the zoning department, a pay rate of $12.50 per hour effective June 27, 2019. Budget code will be 80101.
Second. Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution approving the reappointment of Karen Jaffray as a full-time assessor for a six-year term effective September 30, 2019, through September 30, 2025.
Second. Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Well, that's so, I don't know if you can read it. It's, I can't even read it. Here, read it off here.
Liaison for Record Access Officer. Council moved for the adoption of a resolution appointing Richard Kirschman to serve as liaison for the Record Access Office and Appeals Officer effective as of the date of this resolution.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Consolidated Sewer District 3. Move for the adoption of a resolution to pay application number three to National Water Main Cleaning Company in the amount of $15,518.25 for the Anadag Park Sewer Improvement Consolidated Sewer District Contract Number Three. The town has received $72,500 from New York State EFC Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIIA, and $270,000 from the Anadag County towards the project. The town's municipal contribution is $150,000.
Second. That $150,000, most of that is coming from the offsets that we instituted here a couple years ago, so it's a good deal. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? Yes, unanimously. Thank you.
Website administrator contract agreement. Move for the adoption of resolution to approve and authorize the supervisor to execute the service contract agreement between the Town of Cicero and David Kirk to serve as website administrator for the Town of Cicero for the period July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, at a rate of $10,000 annually.
Second. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? Yes, unanimously. Thank you.
A liquor license. Whereas the Old Edge LLC located at 7356 Turf Street in North Syracuse has applied to the New York State Liquor Authority for an on-premise liquor license, and whereas liquor applications require notification to the local municipal government with a 30-day waiting period thereafter, and whereas the company has requested, the Town of Cicero waived the statutory 30-day waiting period to help expedite the licensing with the state, it is now resolved that the Town of Cicero hereby waives a 30-day waiting period effective immediately and authorizes the supervisor to so notify the applicant of the resolution by electronic mail.
Second. Any board comments or discussion? There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of resolution approving agreement between the Town of Cicero and Anadag County for the administration of a community development and housing assistance block grant for Gateway Park for the paving of 1,900 feet of walking and exercise trails to improve accessibility, installing free canopy shade units, installing safety fencing, and ball field drainage work as contained in the contract. Term of the agreement is January 1, 2019, December 31, 2020. The contract calls for payment of grant funds for the project in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Copy, the proposed agreement has been distributed to board members. This resolution authorizes the supervisor to execute all agreements, as well as any additional necessary papers associated with the underlying action.
Second. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Any extensions? We pass unanimously. Move this to the discussion part of the meeting, time a couple things. First of all, we'd like to congratulate all of the Cicero graduates on completing high school. It's a big achievement in their lives. We wish them well. I hope that some go into public service. There's another thing I want to mention. We're in election season. There's a lot of candidates who are running for office for this town. And what's been going around, I had an employee come to me today, another employee, tell me this year, the year before, who had some serious issues with honesty. That person is now no longer employed with the Town of Cicero. So if people tell you that we're corrupt, it's offensive to the employees here who do a good job, and I spend a lot of hours with them. So if people tell you that the Town of Cicero is corrupt or say they have no proof, they offer no proof, but it sounds good, I guess, on a mailer, call them a liar and tell them to go ahead and file with DA's office. And just remember this one thing, if they're willing to lie to you to get your vote, then what else are they willing to lie to you about? That's all I'm going to say about that. At this point, now we'll open it to public input, would anyone like to approach? Anything to say? Yes, sir, Mr. Glass.
Going to attempt to fill in for Mr. Snyder, who's on vacation. Again?
I beg your pardon?
Again? Yet. But he was on the phone at 8 o'clock this morning checking on the job, so. Anyways, a little report on the Highway Garage. We're making excellent progress. JBS Dirt in the last two weeks, weeks, they have been on the job correcting some problems with the Anadag County people. We've passed all the inspections, backfield, everything, we're ready to go. And national grid, everything is ready to go on the electrical side as soon as natural, or national grid ties us into the high line, everything will be taken off, we've got full power rather than temporary. Our HVAC guys are doing great, they're 99% complete. The plumbers, he's about 95% complete, and all the bathrooms and all that stuff is done, so it's really looking good. 100% of the glass is on site, 50% of the glass is in place, so we're making excellent progress.
We really are. And just to kind of, I guess, get ahead of myself a little bit, we are going to have an open house in that building, and it's open to the public, we want everybody to come and see it. I know some people have said, we don't need it, it's a waste of money. They were going to condemn that building, and it was only because we had some interesting discussions with the people who were going to condemn it, but we didn't, because we had nowhere to put our highway department. This was a needed building, a building that needed to be built. Some people are going to tell you it isn't, they're lying to you too, they don't, they don't know what they're talking about, they don't have the numbers to be asking. But anyway, we are going to do a open house, I think we're looking at, Chris, what, the third week?
Third or fourth of October.
Of October, and that'll be open, everybody will be on Saturday. We anticipate having all of our equipment in the building on that day, so you can see all of our equipment for the first time ever gets to, you know, gets inside the building. We're now, most of it is left outside. But anyway, we'll have more information as we get closer to that. Thank you, Don. Anyone else before we close? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank you. I represent the Old Edge LLC, and I cannot thank you enough. A young lady who's opened the bar, has been through a lot in this process, and you, I can't, I'm just, you can't believe the day you made it, so I just wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you. We work for you, and I'm glad, glad we could help. You're welcome. Okay, I will now make a motion to adjourn.